We got Jake and Liz, we're good. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Would you mind taking role?
All right, commissioners present in establishing a forum Blair Walker Nugent Lockhart Dawkins Lewis and Bull.
Thanks Hannah. We set this time aside for public comments, usually typically give folks three minutes to get up in front and discuss anything that's not on this agenda. And I'm assuming there's no one in the waiting room at all. Okay. Fantastic. So the next item is approval of minutes. So obviously, month ago, September 26th, vigorous discussion, I want to make sure everyone is comfortable with the way it was the minutes came out. Kelsey.
If there's like spelling errors or grammatical errors, doesn't matter.
That's yeah, definitely for spelling errors, edits, anything grammar.
On 5.1, it said the amendment, the amendment was concerns about, I think was concerned probably. And then on 6.1, it says text code amendments, but I think it's supposed to be tax code.
I think it is text.
It is text, okay.
Yes.
All right. And then on 7.1, it said manager Tortilla, I don't know how to say their name, was an update, was an updated on a conditional use permit. So I don't know if it's grammatical, grammatically correct.
Thank you, Commissioner Dawkins. I'll go ahead and I'll go through and proofread it. I'll get those fixed.
Anything else? I could get somebody to move for approval with with edits.
I move that we approve the minutes from September 26th as amended.
Have a second.
A second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes. Okay. Looks like next item is new business. Special day for Mr. Bailey today. Item 7.12024 Comprehensive Plan Presentation Introduction to Land Use Element. Lance Bailey, happy birthday.
Thank you. There's nothing I'd rather be doing than
That's why we especially appreciate you being here.
Actually, I will, I will turn this over to Kate, who's gonna do the presentation for this evening.
All right, we've got a live mic. And just for all of you turtle O, the way you can easily learn it or remember it, turtles are low turtle O. My maiden name was way easier. Okay, so this evening, we're gonna go over the land use element. This is presentation number two of getting you ready for the comprehensive plan update, which is technically underway, but the behind the scenes work is currently, we're pulling information together for the consultant, consultant team. Hopefully, your next meeting Lance and I will be back with some actual pieces of information that you will have to consider, make a decision on and move forward. So again, tonight is the land use element. And in my humble opinion, the most important element, the beginning and the end of the comprehensive plan. So this is, oh, okay, hold on. Maybe. Anyone know how to advance? I've got it working on. I did that on mine. Let's try this again. Is this one right? Starts on. And it's not the same. All right, just a second. Hey, there we go. Maybe. Oh, good. Oh, there we go. All right, there we go. Okay, so the first page is just to give you an overview of what's actually required by the Growth Management Act. It, it really is the piece that is the summary. It's the beginning and the end. It's what kind of land uses do you have today? It is doing basic statistics of how many houses do you have? What is your land zone? How much of it do you have in each category? And then we're also required to protect water groundwater. So that's not, doesn't affect Monroe, well, actually affects Monroe on the hillsides where we have groundwater tables and wells. Next is a newer requirement, and that is when you're looking at your comprehensive plan, consider urban planning that encourages walkability. So you're not having to drive everywhere. So you're active. How are your land uses put together? Is your commercial next year residential? Are your parks close to your housing? And so that's a newer element or requirement. And then finally, protection of our stormwater drainage areas. And so these are the, the legal requirements of the act. So in 2025 is the last time that the city adopted a comprehensive plan update and the city was broken up. Okay, I'm sorry, I can't make this larger, but I will be sending this presentation to you as well as the last one tomorrow morning when I get into the office. But the city was broken up into five different areas. So the first area was, see my little mouse by any chance? So this first area was called A, and it included North Kelsey, the fairgrounds, the airport, and the Frylands industrial area. And it was called, it was considered the regional benefit area, and it was to serve the larger Skikomish Valley from the commercial uses and again from the industrial. The intent for this area is just to continue building over time and strengthening our economic opportunities in the community. The next area is really the heart of Monroe. So everything south of US two, basically to 522. And this area was considered is called Central Monroe, and it was described as the traditional walkable historic core. And the goals as we went through the comprehensive plan and started doing our zoning is the focus is for infill, infill opportunities and continuing the walkability and connectivity to downtown. C is considered West Monroe, but I would refer to it as residential portions of the Frylands. And the goals for this area were very similar to be in the sense that it is your more traditional single family neighborhoods. You've got connectivity with paths, the road network is good, you have access to parks. Some connections to commercial, but more limited. And the goal for this again is for infill development. Planning area D is the Skikomish River, basically includes the Cadman site, Al Borland Park, Sky River Park, and the goal for this is to improve the connections between the historic core and the water. And then finally, E is basically all the residential areas north of US two, including Robin Hood, the foothills. Now we have the Woodlands, Trembling Hill, that entire area. And that was identified for continuing the residential development in that area. But there was to be a focus on infrastructure over time to try to address the walkability and street network. As you know, the topography up there is a little bit challenging. Other things that were included in this, the goals for this area were to work with Washdott to establish a trail through the Washdott right of way, which is the very long area that cuts basically all the way through Monroe down to US two, which was identified at some point as the US two bypass. And then the other goals for this planning area were to improve connectivity to North Kelsey and work on storm management requirements. So you're getting a double use. So the stormwater, if you have a vault, it can be a double use for a park on top, or the way it's being constructed is more of an open space area. So in the land use element, again, this is really a lot of statistics in this element. It doesn't have a whole lot of pretty pictures, but it tells you what we were able to accomplish, the population that we're supposed to accommodate. These slides just talk about the buildable lands from 2012, which was the starting point from the last comprehensive plan. And it divides our land use into the different categories, residential, commercial. And then the graphic on the right talks about were there, were there pending permits at the time that the analysis was the cutoff date, which was April 1st of 2012? Were, were the properties vacant, partially used, redevelopable? And the redevelopable, it's a cost analysis of the land versus structure and the chances that it could redevelop over time. All this information, I'm happy to send you links to the buildable lands report, which I think we've discussed previously. And so also in the land use element from 2015, the section also went over the objectives. An example for this was downtown, develop a thriving downtown with a vibrant main street. That is actually one of the objectives from your last comprehensive plan. And then it has a table at the end which describes each of the different designations, which is illustrated in the future land use map. So again, the yellow, most of the yellow are different types of residential, red is commercial. Gray is industrial. Again, we have more residential in the Frylands area. Blue is institutional, green is limited open space. Yellow is residential, brown is the multifamily designations. So various shades of red are all commercial. And so that moves into our formal zoning code. So you have this, you have this broad land use plan. And the way you actually implement it is our municipal code and the zoning map. So for the most, well, actually for all of it, the colors are very similar. It's almost identical of the land use designation with the zoning. A few things I do want to point out is this lovely circle here. Because we have an airport, the FAA and the Washington State Department of Transportation Aviation Division require us to have airport compatibility regulations. And I think you may have heard conversations on this before, but it really limits the city's ability to develop most of the west, western portion of the city. That there are different zones and they were all established based on crash data. So your most restricted is at both ends of the runway. And then there's fewer regulations, but still regulations everywhere in that circle. The North Kelsey area is highlighted in this area with the overlay that was adopted with the North Kelsey plan. There's different overlays in the industrial area. Actually, one that you were talking about with the definitions, this hash mark is where the adult entertainment area is. And so this is how we are implementing our comprehensive plan. So what does that look like? Here is my composite of the city with the different land uses. We've got our open spaces, our parks, we have the Department of Corrections, the Monroe High School, the historic admin building for the Department of Corrections. You've got the Frylands, the Frylands Industrial Park, the Lake Thai Building, Robin Hood, just as shown is different. It's just showing you the lots for all the development on the hill. We've got a couple of water towers for utilities. The North Kelsey Commercial Area Downtown. And so this is a result of your global comprehensive plan and implementing zoning code and zoning map. And this is really where we're starting. Now, the next piece is what's changed. Again, the last one was adopted in 2015. I think for Monroe, the biggest piece is you have Imagine Monroe. So everything we do from here on out is going to have that filter. When we're looking at land use, when we're looking at housing, transportation, commercial, economic development. So for the, for this community, that's significant. There's also the changes to the Growth Management Act, which I'll get into in a moment. Highlight, then we, so it goes again for Washington State, we have the Growth Management Act. Below that, you have your multi-county planning policies. For us, that's the Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050 and the Regional Transportation Plan. Below that is the Snohomish County planning, or excuse me, it's the planning policies for Snohomish County. And then at the very end is the City of Monroe's locally adopted plan. And we have to be consistent with everything above us. So the really big changes from the Growth Management Act can really be put into two categories since 2015. The first one is housing. There were a slew of amendments to the act, really trying to get at increasing the housing supply. There were a handful of changes for trying to increase accessory dwelling units, which is something that will be coming to you as part of this process. Also addressing displacement. So the more pressure there is to add housing, some of your neighborhoods are going to be displaced and/or the people that are living in these houses. And so we now actually have to do analysis and figure out, well, how can we mitigate that? That will be part of this planning process. And finally, equity analysis. And that's not just on a racial component, but it's also on income. So we will be looking at the city with new filters. This has never been asked of us before. So this is new territory for planners in Washington State. The second bucket, I would say is climate. The two issues that we have to address in this update are air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, and resiliency from natural hazards. So those are the things that we will be focusing on when it comes to climate. The biggest changes with Vision 2050, again, this is the multi-county plan. Our regional geography is changed. So it used to be had a core city, a big city. I can't remember all of them, but the, the biggest one now, they're called high capacity transit communities. And that is where our region wants the growth to go. So that's around light rail, bus rapid transit. City Monroe does not have that. And as far as I'm aware, we're not going to get that, at least in this next planning cycle. And so we're being asked to take less, which is a good thing, or it could be a challenging thing if you want to see a development occur in your community. The next item that has changed significantly in Vision 2050, again, are the housing initiatives. It's addressing that middle housing. It's getting equity, really trying to implement what changed with Growth Management Act. And I will note on the Growth Management Act, the, the biggest change actually happened last year. It was the adoption of House Bill 1220, and I'm happy to send that to you. And that really gets to this new requirement about equity and displacement. And then you'll see this theme, the final component that's really significantly different with Vision 2050 is equity, equity analysis. Just we're needing to look at things differently and not continue, not necessarily bad choices of the past, but there's definitely a push to make things more equitable. And then finally, the countywide planning.
Just a question. We could interrupt.
Yeah.
Melanie?
There it is. When was the Vision 2050 adopted? That was just adopted last year. Okay, thank you. And then the countywide planning policies are not significant changes, but it is again helping us implement Vision 2050 and implementing all the changes to the Growth Management Act. So next is the data. And so I talked about a little bit briefly about the last time this was done, the data was from 2012. Snohomish County just updated the buildable lands report in 2021. And then, so what this is looking at is where do we have vacant land? Where do we have partially vacant land? Where do we have redevelopable land? And based on that and our zoning, it tells us how much housing can be developed, which helps us get to our population target for 2045. This baseline gets us to 2035, and then we have to figure out how to get from 2035 to 2044, which is our next target for growth and population and employment. And so I was talking to Lance about this earlier. I did notice that there were some information that we're gonna have to double check. Cause again, this is where I'm starting. It's not the end information. But you'll see that these red areas are the pending projects that are actually under construction. So this land is no longer available. It's, it's not part of the capacity. And the next one, just getting into more of the buildable lands data. The green areas are where they believe we have capacity to build more residential based on our zoning and where we have vacant or partially vacant land. The information on the right, I want to be very clear, this is the entire Monroe urban growth area. So that's the city and the places that are not currently the city. So it's our unincorporated. And the way this works is this blue line means where this is 50% of us reaching our target for 2035. This graph here, the squiggle, is our estimated population. And then it gets formally updated with every census. So the first one is in 2010. And this unfortunately was, this information was compiled before we had the 2020 data. So it's a little bit off. And again, this is, this is where we're starting to do all of our analysis. It's definitely not the end. The next information is the same data, but looking at employment or jobs. And so you'll see the North Kelsey area is included. There are some properties in the Frylands area. Quite a few parcels along Main Street. And again, the, the blue line is we've hit 50% of our target for 2035 as our start, and we have to get to 2044 next. All right, the numbers. This is what we're trying to accommodate. Oh my goodness, this is so weird. Hold on. Population, okay. So now we have the 2020 census, which is 19,699 for the City of Monroe. We had the targets that were adopted in 2035. That's in our comprehensive plan. And it's also adopted in the Snohomish County Comprehensive Plan. The buildable lands report, which I just very high level went over, tells us that we have capacity to accommodate 23,673 people. But we have to get to 24,302. So we have to look at our land uses to accommodate an additional 629 people. And so that means you need to look at housing strategies. We need to look at the land uses. Where do we, that we're currently, do we need to allow mixed use possibly? More than likely, we're going to be looking at housing strategies, to be completely honest with you. And so this is the, the number we're going after. We have to accommodate 269 additional people by 2044. And that is just, it's not from today, but it's from 2035 because we know we had capacity through that. And then the next set of numbers is employment. 715 is the magical number. We need to figure out how to accommodate an additional 715 jobs after 2035. And then the land use, all of the comprehensive planning is really fun, challenging, exciting, because there's, there's competing goals. We want to respect people's property rights. We want to grow the economy. We want to make sure we've got open space and parks and affordable housing. And so all of these competing goals, you will have to, all of us actually, will work together to figure out what's right. What is the right mix for Monroe to meet our, our goals? So once we come up with some preliminary ideas of, we think this is the right mix. Well, then we have to go through, did we meet our housing targets? Do we have a transportation system that's going to support where we're thinking growth needs to go? Do we have enough water sewer? Does the school district, have they accounted for what we're planning for? And that's both the city or the Monroe School District. We also have areas that are in the Snohomish School District. So we need to coordinate with them. We need to be working with our utility providers, cable, phone and such. Did we accommodate enough parks, open space? And then the final one is we are also required to assess all this with our shorelines. But we recently updated our shoreline master program. So I'm pretty confident that's not, that one at least is a done deal for now. And then finally, two of these items that have been brought to your, or at least one of these have been brought to your attention. Since Lance and I have been here, we have been informed, there are some outstanding items or new items that we need to address as we're going through this comp plan update. The first one Anita brought to your attention, and that was the food bank property. The question was, do we amend the zoning code or do you change the land use designation? And what we found going through notes from our predecessors is that it was supposed to be in the mixed use zone. So we will correct that as part of this process. Another question that's come up recently is accessory dwelling units. Right now, they're only allowed in zones that are for residential use. A question has come up, can you allow it in the mixed use? Should we allow it in the mixed use zone, which is a combination of offices and residential? And then finally, this last one, I had to laugh a little bit because this was a conversation when I worked here in the early 2000s in our industrial areas. Should we be allowing indoor athletics, sports complexes? Or should that area be preserved for industry? So some of these, these are the items that we'll be having conversations about as we move forward in the comprehensive plan process. Any questions? Sure, there's a lot of, you're like, oh my gosh, too much.
Um, as we move forward and we have to have these discussions with like the school district and the county and stuff, do we, do we end up having meetings that are like combined with different entities? Or how does, is that mostly through the city? Does planning get involved in that? How does that work?
So I suspect that the, well, the Planning Commission and City Council will certainly be having joint sessions. One of the next, the things that we're gonna do next is to form what we're calling the working group, which we're gonna have members of each of the boards and commissions. And that, that group will be working on some of the beginning policy issues with, in conjunction with the consultants. And one of the reasons that we were gonna form that working group out of the boards in commissions is so that we have membership that can update each of those boards and commissions as we go through this process. So that, that'll be a forum to be able to disseminate that information out that's going on with, with the process. So it'll eliminate to a certain degree for us to have to have a lot of those joint meetings, but we'll, but we'll certainly have them. And I know that we'll have them with the Planning Commission and City Council.
And then I'll just add on the, for the school district and utilities, we are looking at a task force with those very specialized conversations about utilities and the capital facility plan for the school district as well.
But the Public Works Director, he'll know off the top of his head today what their capacity is. You know, if they could accommodate 2,000 more residents in for water and sewer, right?
Yes, but that's also part of this project. This is a unique, the most unique comp plan update process I've actually been through. Part of this is the whole planning component, but next year, well, in this year as well, what we have left, they're actually updating the water and the sewer comprehensive plans concurrently with the land use. So we can make sure that everything is synced up and transportation, sorry.
And, and, and right now, that's really the bulk of the work that's, that's going on is getting baseline data for all of the utility plans. And so the, the, today, I don't think that, that And so the the today, I don't think that that the Public Works Director could answer that question off the top of his head. But what we're, what we're looking at, and and as Kate said, this, this is, I think, somewhat of a unique approach in that we're doing all of those utility plan updates at the same time that we're doing the comprehensive plan update, which it is a good thing. It's the way it probably should be done. It just isn't always, just doesn't always happen that way. So as they're, as they're working on the the baseline data for the utility plants, that's going to inform what we're putting together in terms of the land use scenarios and 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 looking at these population targets, job targets and tying also into a lot of some of the work that the state has been doing in terms of requiring, encouraging, depends on which one you're talking about, which they're doing for cities and counties to create diverse, you know, more diverse housing, getting away in some respects of some of this single family residence only zoning piece. And you may have run into that in in some of the media talking about housing in the in the Puget Sound. So that's going to inform those those development scenarios that we can actually look at it and say, well, here because it, the answer depends on where you are in the city. You know, like you can, you can engineer just about anything, but there's, there's areas where the cost of doing that infrastructure actually pencils out in terms of being able to do development. And so as we, as we plan that ahead of time, looking at areas that that are more conducive for higher density development and others that aren't. So it's, there's a lot of moving parts that are that are that are going on right now. Will this, the next phase is, is to really start to present some of that data so that we can, we can see you know, how how those land use scenarios, I I'm trying to speak more to what the planning commission will be working on. But how, how are, what will some of those land use scenarios look like? How can we achieve these goals that we're, that we're trying to, or in some places mandated to to address?
I have a question about that. So a lot of what you're talking about is going to be people having to come up with ideas and how in our role at the commission, normally it's pretty formal and there's not this brainstorming idea stuff going on. So is, does the consultant do the brainstorming and bring us ideas? Or are we going to have a different type of format where we get to come up with those type of scenarios?
It's a little of both. The way, the way I see this coming out is you'll have, you'll look at a, at a, at a variety of scenarios. And then the complaint, in the complaint, we'll actually adopt what we'll refer to as the preferred scenario. And then the policies will be based on achieving that preferred scenario. So we may have three or four different scenarios that we'll look at overall. And then there will be the preferred scenario when we, when we come out with the final comprehensive plan update.
Because Randy, for example, the last time we did buildable lands, there was really a robust discussion about how we get to the, the number that we needed to achieve. So it, I don't know how many planning commission meetings we had. It was, you know, significant number of planning commission, because there's, there's a number you can get to just looking at the buildable lands report. And then there's a number you can get to, which I think will do a better job of it now of getting to it, to achievable housing. I think that's what we're calling, so that it's not just a number of houses or a number of people that can live there, but actually our city residents afford to live there. So we'll have to take that into consideration as well, not just a pure, you know, there's a vacant lot, we can put a duplex on it. You know, that's five people, whatever. It's going to be Canada developer successfully buy that and make it so that it's not so expensive that nobody could afford to buy it or rent it.
So on a day when that's on our agenda, the discussion piece for discussion by commissioners will be like bulleted under new business, like for each item. So there's more robust conversation that can occur like that.
Well, it'd be new business the first time and then a whole business the second time, just like some of the things they brought back, you know, quite a number of times. I mean, for example, the definitions, I mean, we saw that eight times, didn't we? So and each time it was, I mean, not eight times with this commission, but eight times over the course of its life. And each time it was more discussion and open discussion, right?
That's a good example, because that actually came, it was already like done, and then we just got to review it and comment on it. So I guess that's where I'm coming from is who's going to bring those four preferred scenarios forward? Are we going to be able to be involved in the discussion of how those four come up? Or is it just the consultant will bring us four and we get discussed those four?
It's more of the secondary, but if you have, if you have ideas, we would be more than happy to feed them to the consultants. But we tell them, we have, we have all of these things that we have to accomplish. Do your best work to come up with scenarios and then the committees get to start tearing them apart.
Um, I have a question about the numbers and stuff. Obviously, projections are never like a hundred percent right. So with like the last, how, how far off or spot on were those projections when all was said and done?
Believe it or not, Snohomish County and the Office of Washington Office of Financial Management have actually been extremely accurate over the last thirty years in their projections. Some of the, the interesting things that have happened recently, and it could be just a matter of course correction. But with the pandemic, there was a significant change in people moving out of cities into more rural areas. The whole remote working is something that we planners haven't really seen before. And so there are some challenges that we've not experienced, but in the big picture, when it comes to population, employment, Snohomish County, who does all of the modeling and the Office of Financial Management have been very close to the actual numbers. I'll dig up an old report. I was, I was blown away.
So those remote jobs definitely count towards how many the city would need to accommodate, right?
You know, I guess that's, that's a question that probably deserves a little bit more conversation with the county because what they're looking at is brick and mortar jobs. Because even for home occupations, which has become very popular since the pandemic, those aren't included in your initial estimates, but you get credit for them. So if we have a way of figuring out how many people are working remote, we could potentially get credit for those jobs.
I think one of the things to keep in mind is the, as, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of inputs that are coming in from the county, countywide planning, the countywide planning policies, the regional policies. And then this other layer, which I find kind of interesting, is that you, so we have population, population projections that are, that are just from Monroe. And then there is this, this other piece, which is the population allocations that they look at regionally. And there's been some interesting debates about how to, how to, to piece those together so that they are consistent with one another. I mean, you, if you, if your community's population projection is, is X and your allocation regionally is not in agreement with that, then, then what do you do? And one of the things that's going on regionally is there's a lot of focus on, on public transit. And there's billions of dollars being, being invested in public transit systems. And a community like Monroe is really not, we don't get any, we're not getting any. I mean, now that, I guess that's, that's, that's the, the good way. But so there's, there's a focus regionally to allocate population growth in areas that are being served by transit. So you'll see, you know, a lot of projected growth in, in, in Everett, for example, that to take advantage of some of that public transit. So there's communities that are a little bit on the periphery, like Duval and, and Monroe and Snohomish are in kind of a unique position in, in terms of how we exist in our planning realm. And as we do these comprehensive plan updates into that sort of, into that sort of thinking. But you'll hear a lot more about that. I just, that's just a little, a little bit of, of the tip of the iceberg of how, you know, how, how are we going to manage that? Because it's, it's, it's going to be interesting because, you know, what's, what is going to happen with people that are working more remote? So, you know, some of those, it, it, it affects those land use patterns.
But Lance, our job should theoretically be easier than those cities along the light rail line?
Definitely.
Because I'm looking at multifamily in review, in permit, in process, you know? And it looks like there's just hundreds of, they're trying to accommodate the number of people that are going to want to, you know, live along that light rail, rail lane and commute, you know, south. I'm all the way as far north as Arlington, they've got.
Yeah.
Well, I can share with you the, the delta for Marysville was closer to, I want to say it was like five thousand, and we have six hundred and twenty nine. I mean, that's a big deal. Marysville is getting bus rapid transit. And so they have to accommodate more people and jobs. I did want to let you know that this, this two thousand forty four population initial target, that number came out of the Vision two thousand fifty to Snohomish County. Because the, again, the Vision two thousand fifty says Snohomish County will get X, King County will get X, Pierce County will get X, Kitsap will get X. And so then the county took that number and said, okay, based on all the geographies that are within Snohomish County, we are, are allocating X amount to each city. So this initial population does come from the, the multi-county plan to the county, to us. And this has been adopted by the county council.
But some of the projections have been too high for what they were estimating the population was going to, to get to your original initial question.
Okay, that was just a really a very high level, fast overview of what we're going to be accomplishing in the land use element. I'm hoping next we're going to bring you the housing element because that one is going to require the most work of any of our elements. So I'll probably have Anita come back. She's our housing guru. And then we'll also hopefully be coming back with the participation plan. And our consultant team has done an initial audit to figure out where we are. And again, what has changed with the Growth Management Act, Vision two thousand fifty, and the items that we are required by law to comply with.
So, so the proposal, the consultant, their engagement period is how long?
Well, we have them under contract until the middle of two thousand twenty four, when this thing will be adopted.
Okay.
And the participation plan actually requires the planning commission and city council to adopt. It will outline how we hope to interact with the public, which we'll get at what Lance was talking about with our oversight committee.
Stakeholder meetings and all of that strategy.
And I can tell you, the consultant is already working on, there will be a website that we will host that will have all the information, eventually it will have surveys. And so we'll have one place for the entire community to go and get information of where we're at, the data that's available and the like meetings. All right, well, that is all I have for you this evening. I just realized earlier today that we did not put together the community development page for the Council of Planning Commission, which was due tomorrow. So we'll, we'll be bringing you the projects, the building stats, business licenses at one of your meetings coming up. Is there anything else you want to discuss with us? You got Lance and myself?
We'll get to next item. Yeah, okay. Thank you both very much. Discussion by commissioners and staff, like to start with commissioners that are remote, if I could. Liz, eat dab or anything good? Can you unmute for us, please?
Can you not hear me?
I can hear you, Liz. It's just really quiet.
Oh, I'm.
There we go. That's better.
I was going to say, I'm, I'm like yelling on my end, but yeah, not much on E down from my side, so not much going on right now.
Okay, thanks, Liz. Questioner, Walker. Your ears are still young enough, you can hear well.
Amazing. I've got no updates. Lance, I just want to say happy birthday, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you both for joining us. Kelsey?
I don't have any new business, but thank you for that presentation.
Oh, Kelsey, what about the the short course?
I went to it. It was good.
It's good.
I am drawing a blank right now on.
Okay.
But yeah, it was good.
You did?
Yeah, I did good.
Good. And it was in person or remote?
It was remote, yeah.
Thank you. Melanie?
Happy birthday, Lance, and thank you to city staff for the presentation. And this is an exactly planning specific, but ballots are in the mail. And there are a lot of positions statewide and regionally and stuff on the ballot, along with the Monroe School District levy. So vote by November eighth. There's a ballot box, Dropbox at the library, or you can put it in the mail. And if you haven't gotten a ballot, because I know that there's some post, the post office is having a little bit of backup in different cities and stuff. You can go to either the auditor's office in person or call, and they can send you a new ballot, or I think you can get a proxy online. So vote by November eighth.
Thanks. We're, if we need a sign for our yard for the school levy. Okay. Good information. Janelle?
Is it on?
Yeah.
All right, I do not have anything tonight. I just want to say thank you to planning manager Tertolo. I wanted to say for that comprehensive plan update. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy?
I went to the parks meeting last Thursday, the twentieth. And I know we've been trying to figure out if they were full or not. They are now full. They got their seventh member at that meeting. They did mention that some of them are having new terms that start in January. So if people are interested, they could apply to be Parks Board members. They are next year going to be updating their park policy. So if any people are asking any of us about park things, they can start looking for giving feedback for park policy stuff next year. They will definitely be sending out a survey at some point. And some of the stuff they updated on was the Trombley Hill Park did not get a large grant that they were hoping to for some major funding to start the infrastructure there. So they're going to try to find ways for to activate it for passive activities onsite for a while that might delay them even a couple of years on that. And they also updated that the security cameras that they'd been working to get, they got the first ones installed at Lewis Street, and they have four more that will be installed. And they're, they're only to be used by the police and more of like a after effect. And they all have signs up that are notifying the public that they are under surveillance. I think that's about all they had at their meeting, but it was, it was a lengthy meeting. It was seemed like they get a lot of stuff done there, so.
So Randy, if, so if we're, if we're so busy, we don't want to apply for a Parks Board position. Any member of the public can show up at a Parks Board meeting.
Yes, and they do theirs online and in person like us, but yes.
Okay, and but we Okay, and, but we could, you know, as a member of public, give our three minutes at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, and I would, if, because you know, sometimes people ask us stuff about parks. And so, yeah, I would definitely encourage them to either go there and give their feedback. Or or if they really want to be involved, they can try to get on the board, but they can also start looking for that feedback for the policy stuff next year.
Okay.
That's all I got, except I do want to say that I want to be on whatever that I can be on for the task force with the consultants. I want to volunteer for that. Yes.
Okay.
Do you have anything for us?
I don't think I have anything. Kate, do you have anything else for us this evening?
I do not. I'm just glad the smoke's gone.
The fire's not. So keep the rain coming. I, I don't have anything to add.
Thank you very much for joining us this evening. It's good to be here. Okay. Another year older. It comes a day at a time. Thankfully, I don't think I'd want to wake up one day and be a year older. Hannah, do you have anything you need to remind us about or need to pay attention to?
I do. Fancy that. First of all, I'm happy to be here with all of you tonight. I missed you last time. Tuesday, November first, just before the council meeting, there's going to be the little recognition ceremony for our boards, committees and commission members. There's going to be, from what I hear, rumor is, there's going to be snacks. So that'll be six thirty to seven o'clock, Tuesday, November first.
And they would appreciate a response via email?
Yes, Jody sent an email to your city emails. I'm not sure how frequently those are checked, but. Yep.
And it would be best just reply to Jody and not reply all?
Please, don't, don't reply all.
Thank you.
Just FYI, mine actually did not come to my city email. It came to my non-city email, so check that too. So if you don't see it in your city email, check your other one too. Still don't reply all.
All right. Someone like to move for a German? Motion?
I move that we adjourn the Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
A second to motion.
Thanks, Janelle. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for the education. Appreciate it.